Okay, I've got six o'clock, so I'm gonna call to order the Village of Belleville, Village Board of Trustees for Monday, February seventeenth. Um, and we're gonna do the pledge, and the flag, I've noticed, is in the window in the corner. So those of you who are that corner, I promise you that there's actually an American flag standing over there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then if we could do roll?
Yeah, President Larson.
Here.
Tasty Bane.
Here.
Tasty Echolcraft.
Here.
Tasty Kazmar.
Here.
Tasty Ward.
Present.
Tasty Ziegler.
Here.
Tasty Zervis.
Here.
We have a forum.
Oh, there's a meeting posted.
Meeting was posted as required by law.
And there's full public participation. Uh, public participation allows citizens to be heard on any agenda and non-agenda item. The public may also comment during the public participation section of each item. The village board shall make no decisions or consideration of the action of citizen comments for items not on the agenda, except to refer the matter to the village administrator for administrative consideration, or to schedule the matter for board consideration at a later date. And as usual, if you've got comments, please stand, state your name, address, and try to keep comments to three minutes. Does anybody wanna comment on a non-agenda item? No? Okay. We will move on to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine, will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member requests it, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered the first item after the approval of the consent agenda. Three items are the village board meeting minutes from February third, uh, the twenty twenty-five Wisconsin Align Energy Community Tree Program Agreement, and appointment of Kimberly Crowley to the Community Development Authority. We have a motion.
I'll move over to the consent agenda.
Second. Okay, motion by Gary, seconded by Tony. All in favor? I opposed. That passes. Move on to President's report. I don't have anything. Staff report. Connie?
We go back. Who left CBA?
Uh, Larry Hazelton.
Larry left long time ago.
Yeah, and he's been vacant since then.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, staff report.
Uh, there's an election tomorrow. That's all I can think about right now.
Okay.
Come join me, it'll be fun. Uh, where's something one?
We'll go the opposite around. Henry, anything from your end? Drew? Ian? Rick? Gabe?
Oh.
All right, we're moving along. Full business discussing consider resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero-one, Lake Bellevue and River, Sugar River Ad hoc Committee.
So you guys asked from the last meeting to develop an ad hoc committee that would pretty much manage the, or set up a plan for the, um, the agreement. Um, and so this, if you wanna, this resolution was approved by Rick, and he's good to go if you're not able to complete that.
So this isn't actually selecting members of the committee, it's literally just setting up the
Setting up a structure for it.
For the committee.
You guys asked for five members, two trustees, and three residents.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh-one.
Second.
Motion by Deb, seconded by Shelley. Any further discussion at all?
Uh, Michael Harkin, Village Development, Village Belleville resident. Um, I was hoping to do this before any type of motion was made, but I would suggest taking the word ad hoc off there and just making it a solid committee. Because there are long-term goals that were stated in there, and there's one of the objectives is for long, and add a long-term presence for the funding. So a member, a member on the board can actually make that suggestion if they might.
Sure.
So that way it saves time, and we don't have, the village doesn't have to backtrack.
Anybody else has another comment they'd like to make? On that?
I'll comment based on that. I don't disagree that there should be a permanent committee relative to this, but I think the main goal for the ad hoc committee is to basically put together a prioritized list so that we can get it over to the attorneys to get the bequeathment essentially closed out and come to the board with that plan so that it's settled on. And, and that might very well include setting up a permanent committee as part of the suggestion for that. Cause I, I absolutely agree with you, there's an ongoing element to that, but I, I, I'm not sure that that's kind of where it's at yet, if that makes sense.
The problem with that, Jeff, is I see, as you know, I've been part of an ad hoc committee, and the ad hoc committees, the village, the village's board does not have to take, take the consideration of the ad hoc committee, the village's board can do whatever.
Well, the village board even has to
Everything.
That's still true, even standing committees. They, they take the recommendation, but they still don't have to act in the same fashion as the committee recommends. Whether it's ad hoc or standing committee. I, again, I don't disagree. I don't speak for everybody else on the board, I don't think there's an appetite to necessarily go against that. I just don't think the board has time. And I think that's part of the element here is that we're trying to set up a committee that's more getting more input from the community. Not necessarily less input from the board, but the board's got a lot on its plate as it stands. So we're trying to get some more outside input relative to that.
From what I've seen and what I read today, what Gabe put together, it's already set up. The verbiage is already there to be a committee, it's just
Sure, which, which would make it very easy for the board to set it up. So again, I don't, I don't disagree. I, I'm, 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 I'm not, I don't know that, I don't know that we're ready yet to set that up, just because there's a lot of moving pieces relative to what's, might, might even be proposed by the ad hoc committee, but that's, that's my take on it. But I think others have differing opinions on this.
My, my take would be if, if the ad hoc committee at some point, either it'll be dissolved, and at which case, wouldn't it move probably in the parks? Or, for carrying on?
Right.
If purpose.
Anybody else have any other comments? Okay, so we got a motion by Deb, seconded by Shelley, to dissent, establish the Lake Bellevue and Sugar River Ad hoc Committee. All those in favor? I, I opposed. That carries. Okay. New business. Uh, discussing consider the appointment of Drew Evelyn as the Director of Public Works.
Uh, Evelyn.
Evelyn, apologize.
And this is just a statutory thing that we have to do, somebody has to be appointed as the Public Works Director. Gives them the authority, so if there's a development, uh, he could technically stop development if they're not doing what they need to be doing, their utilities and stuff like that, but it can't stand statutory power, you said, if that's You want a motion?
I'm using Drew, Drew Evelyn as the Director of Public Works.
Second.
Okay. Okay, motion by Gary, seconded by Deb, any further discussion? All in favor? I opposed. Passes. Next item is discussing consider the twenty twenty-six fiscal year budget approval schedule.
Yeah, so Finance Committee reviewed this, recommended it for your approval. I also, we had the elders conference last week, brought it to Brian and Kila, our financial advisors, and looked at them, like, this is great. So, um, this is our financial advisors, they like that schedule too, so. Obviously, some dates may change if something drastic happens, but pretty much played on these dates for budget discussions.
We just finished one.
I know. It's coming. Don't you worry.
So I think there were some comments at Fin, at Finance to add, put the, the audit results kind of in the schedule as well as having a quarterly
So that the quarterly one is more to finance.
That's more for Finance, but
And then audit, uh, that is already a statutory that you will have to review it as the village board. And so I don't know when, every year it's different, so that's why I didn't put it in here, but the auditors will automatically come in two days, anyway.
Well, I know to us, but I think to Finance was the other.
We can have it before.
Yeah, I'd want, I'd want to have that step in the process. Other than that, I'm fine with that.
Probably March of the board.
Yeah. So we need to make a motion to
I'll move to approve the twenty twenty-six fiscal year budget.
Second.
Damn, it's getting
I'm seconding.
I'm gonna give it to Maxine, we can wait until
Sorry. I can slap it.
I'm not
I know.
Slapping any hand there.
I know.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Okay, so a motion by Gary, seconded by Maxine, to approve or adopt the twenty twenty-six fiscal year budget approval schedule. All in favor? I opposed. Okay. Next, discussing consider a room tax ordinance.
So this came up from Finance Committee because Debbie wants to create a Airbnb above her, uh, Baba Lama. And to be able to do that, or she doesn't need us, but permission for that, but if we wanna take advantage of that and create a room tax, which is what most communities do, uh, this is a process that we took out. We generate to five percent of the expend, of the proceeds go to the room tax. The village by law cannot be the one to spend it. Yeah, we have to create a tourism committee, which you already done with the economic program, Tourism Committee. That will, that money will then be funneled to, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, who has to spend the money on tourism. So, hey, there's a baseball tournament coming, did you know you could stay here? They can't just say, hey, uh, there's a, there's a mural happening that has nothing to do with tourism and the room tax. So it has to be some way, the advertisements has to be used for the room tax.
Yeah. Um, I guess one other comment, so it's a seventy thirty split, seventy percent goes to the tourism motion entity, thirty percent is general purpose revenue for this, the village. Probably not a whole lot in this case, but, um, it's something.
And this isn't setting the rate at all, this is only just setting up the structure of the ordinance to allow for it.
Just sets it at eight percent, so if you
Plus eight percent.
Different, eight percent is the maximum, a lot of nicely, if you wanna set it at a different percentage, that's totally up to the board.
Generally, most to five. Please, one's around there.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, I think we do need a motion. I'm just
Okay, I make a motion that we implement a room tax ordinance of five percent. Excuse me.
Second.
Okay. It's a motion by Maxine, seconded by Gary, to set up a room tax ordinance that would be set at five percent. Um, where is the rate set up in the, in the, in the actual ordinance? Does he have a penalty of five percent, but I don't see?
It's in the first two paragraphs, Jeff. In red.
Got it.
What's the question? The front page is chapter five.
Yep, so we will put it under where we'll make it look all fancy, but, um.
So this will go into chapter five, two, twenty, okay. So it's just, on the backside, it just says four twenty-two, frontside, it does say five twenty-two, so. Need to make sure we correct that number one against.
Do we do, do we know what taxes are for, like, Verona or what?
Five. Wannakey five, Verona five.
They'll pay a lot.
New Harris Valley. New Harris has a town camp.
Make sure it's, yeah, I need to spell them.
So like seven acres dairy, what do they charge?
Oh, who's also
That's a miniature of seven acres. Mike, did you have a comment or question? Sorry.
I had kind of both on, on my first question here, this is just for the ordinance, perhaps, okay? It's not for the application. Just the ordinance.
Yeah, I think the application would be part of the, there's an application process, I think, but
I, I have questions and concerns with the application, and I'm very interested, Gabe, and the other staff, so.
Five percent ordinance.
It's eight, it's written, it's written in, it's like right at the bottom of that first paragraph. Maxine suggests five.
Oh.
Instead of eight.
The application says five percent. The ordinance says eight.
Yes.
So
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Oh, there's application fees. On the application also, that, so.
Oh, nice.
Hell, Montrose has a room tax, I can't doubt they got it.
Arston, you have, you have been my best.
Scottsdale, Scottsdale, five, the name is eight, Lloyd is eight, and Brian, give your survival to him.
That, I would probably go up, I'd probably go to seven instead of five, but and it's sort of the tax that people are gonna be paying by staying, it's, it's, if you're paying a hundred dollars, it's gonna be for five dollars or seven dollars, it's not like we're talking about a huge revenue generator, but if you've got Airbnbs or other, other opportunities. I think there's a balancing act of charging, it's not, it's not, it's, it's setting a precedent, I would, I would hate to go too low, just because it ends up being a lot of administrative work and not a lot of revenue to come in for it, but I'm also not suggesting that we go to, I don't think it should be so open necessarily either.
I understand the administrative work, it's the same no matter what percentage to get out.
Correct, well, that's what I mean, was you still have to deposit the check or do the accounting to figure out
File the forms of the Department of
Forms. With that, I'd make a motion to amend Maxine's motion to adjust it to seven percent. Seven. Any further discussion on that at all?
Just one question, what did they say this roaming areas?
It's
Five.
Um, yeah, Bell's is five and a half, Stephen's one was eight, Lloyd was eight, um,
New Harris is five, Wannakey's five.
So it's which is eight. I mean, there's, there's a bunch of other ones, but they vote anywhere between five and five and eight, and most of them are higher.
Would it be real hard to adjust, and say we had it five, like, three years, and then we decided we might as well go to seven or eight? Would it be real hard to adjust that, or make, amend the motion?
There's just being ordinance, man, yeah.
Yeah, wouldn't be just difficult to adjust it down either. It's not, I don't think we're talking about a cross
Probably both things.
We, like, I don't think we're gonna be renting out rooms for three or four hundred dollars a bath.
If you're talking about a hundred dollar a night, it'll be like about eight bucks.
Seven, seven, seven dollars or five dollars, so it's a
I don't know, it's just
I don't know, Jeff, underneath this.
I'm sorry?
You can rent out a whole house underneath this, Jeff, as long as you have condition use permit.
What'd you say, Mike, say it louder.
I said you, you can rent out a house through this and have to pay the tax as long as CUP condition use permit.
Thanks. Any further discussion? So first, we will vote on the amendment to update the proposed, uh, motion to adopt the room tax at five percent, this would amend it to seven percent. So, um, I'm gonna do a roll, cause I'm gonna need to roll it soon.
Okay. Just give me a second, I missed the second. Apologize.
Second was Tony.
Tony, okay. I totally, okay, uh, horrible, uh, Tasty Bane.
Yes.
Uh, Echolcraft.
Yes.
Kazmar.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Ziegler.
Yes.
Zervis.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
All right, that amendment passes.
Okay. So that, now we've got the amended motion, or the full motion now stands at adopting the room ordinance, which would be at seven percent. And because everybody voted for that, I'm gonna just do it as a voice vote, instead of doing a roll, I'll vote, cause I'm
gonna pass.
Not influencing anybody's vote. Uh, all in favor of that? I opposed. Okay, that passes. Okay, so then relative to the application.
Application I would mind.
Is more whatever, but Mike, did you have a comment or question about the application?
I did, my chat was, also the park and, and the village administrator passed the deal with the third page.
Okay.
Um, cause the whole application is subject to zoning code, direct follow. Six fifteen seventy. And the third, the third page is rewriting the definitions and creating, creating, uh, new requirements, which would be new ordinance requirements for that, so, for that section. And there's some misinformation on the third page, like, uh, the tourist section, there is no thirty day limit underneath six fifteen seventy, right in the definition. And both, in both the bed and breakfast and, and the tourist lining requires CUP. So the third page would be, we're all employed because it's, because it's up to the zoning, it's up to the zoning commission and planning commission to approve it.
Oh, I will change the, to match the summary, to match our code. Amendment, so we're looking for approval, the application just goes, floor show you, this is how we will go through that process.
Well, I guess the, and I'm not disputing that Mike is accurate or not, but I think I mentioned this at Plan Commission when we talked about this. Um, the thirty days, the fewer the thirty days threshold is significant, just because otherwise it's a standard rental, right? We're not, this is not the same category of of application and approval, and you've gotta get state, state approval to do this. Um, so there, there's definitely gotta be laws in place to change this from a standard, a standard rental property, basically.
So one thing, Jeff, if you wanted to add in the thirty days, you would have to do it underneath the definition of that item in the village ordinance under six fifteen seventy. You can't do it through the application.
Yeah, yeah, understandable, but
Yeah, well, one thing I'll mention is just about, um, like the Airbnb, so there's a separate state statute about those
Right.
That treats those differently than like, um, a bed and breakfast.
A bed and breakfast, yeah, yeah.
So like the thirty days, that is in the definition for, um, the Airbnb, um,
The tourist room house, when it's referred to.
Um, I forgot the exact, like, current, not the state statutes, but it does say, it, it's between like six and thirty consecutive nights.
Gotcha, okay.
But that's more or less related to your ord, the ordinances you can pose on Airbnb.
Right.
So it just relates to the tax.
So we may need to update our ordinances to reflect that, but
Cause, cause I wrote, I wrote it down, uh, the bed and breakfast, it's, it's eight rooms, twenty tourists, and ten nights for bed and breakfasts. That's what they're allowing.
About to ten nights. Yeah.
So the tour, the tour, tourist, uh, rooming house is the, is the next definition.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there is no time limit, there is, there is no headcount. And there's, there's no requirements in ordinance.
In our ordinances.
Correct.
But there's, yeah, but as it, as it relates to the whole application process, and again, I don't think we're fully addressing that all tonight, cause we're gonna have to update our ordinances, is what it sounds like. Just
I just, I, I want, I wanna, I wanna send you guys some time and maybe table the application, maybe there's an application and
Well, we're not gonna make a motion in the application, cause it's administrative anyway, so it, it's literal, but I, I don't disagree. We definitely need to update that, but I think we need to revisit the, the ordinances that we're talking about to support this. So. Gabe, I'm assuming you can take that away?
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Thanks.
Any other comments, questions on that? Okay, so reports from boards, commissions, committees, Parks and Recreation, Parks, Recreation and Forestry. Sure what else we've, we, we're, has they been doing the, the whole master planning of parks and arts? I know we went out with the, the college kids and looked at trail possibilities.
Yeah, and then we're having the focus groups with the individuals.
Right.
This Thursday.
Okay.
I mean, eleven is cheaper.
So
Or an open house.
Sashis. Thanks. Gotcha. That's like with heavy users of the parks, they're gonna come in and let us know their wish list of things they'd like in the the parks. Uh, economic development, tourism, um, obviously, we just talked about some of that stuff, but, um, the big thing there is that we are working with the UW extension. And we're likely gonna set up, we're in the process of setting up another sort of an ad hoc committee, I suppose, but sort of a, a working group that will also be available for the public to come and join for part of that, but there's, um, they're actually doing it free of charge, but there's about four different modules, if I remember correctly, that will go through kind of evaluating, um, what, what the village wants, what businesses could use in the area relative to that, so we can put together a study that'll be able to be shared more broadly with businesses, but also serve as a, as a recruiting tool, I think, for new businesses coming to town, all that sort of thing, so.
So again, like, what are we good at, what do we want? It's really gonna answer what is Belleville wanna be when it grows up, and then gets us to that.
Right. But also gives us a structure so that it can be reproduced as we develop and grow, and we can revisit that report timely fashion, so it's not starting over from square one, so. Uh, financing governance?
Uh, nothing beyond what was already discussed here tonight.
Library, for example?
Nope.
Nothing. Plan Commission, um, was a fairly short meeting, but we, well, I will say just so for, for everybody's edification, I suppose, that, um, on the west side, on Olson, west of Olson, so right on Olson Street, um, I think it's property owned by, by Olson, and he, uh, was proposing to put in higher density, a higher density planned urban development right in that front lot. And it didn't even get a motion to adjust it, so that's not happening. At least at this point, so. But a little nap. Nothing else? Police?
Nothing.
Nothing? All right.
I had senior citizens tonight, tomorrow they break ground, I shouldn't say ground, because it's inside, they are gonna start undoing the kitchen. That's so they're excited.
Saw they had their building permit when I walked the dogs by the other day, so that's
They're all legal.
Yep.
Yeah.
Cool. Communications, miscellaneous business, any news and announcements? Obviously, the election's going to tomorrow.
Yeah, I talked to the corporate for Piggly Wiggly, uh, the business is still staying strong, there's no plans to leave. If they were, if things don't go well, the first one will be, get a new franchisees, franchisees over, and then corporate will take it prior to mentioning that. So these will be the next steps.
Their lease, we, we've kind of
Until twenty thirty-two.
Twenty thirty-two, so they're, they're actually there. Um,
They'll be there for a while.
Right, so, so the rumors that Piggly Wiggly is vacating are not true. Right, so, so the rumors that Piggly Wiggly is vacating are not true. That's all the important stuff going on in the belt. That is actually important. I mean, obviously, we want to have a, want to have a, a grocery store in town.
Uh, real quick, so I don't know if I have the chance to say that finance governance or not, but. Last week's report, but, uh, the auditor said that we should have at least a draft audit, uh, by mid-March.
Okay. Any other news and announcements? Upcoming community events?
Yes.
Hmm?
Yes.
What about big cats? What about what? About what?
I thought he said.
He goes six thirty.
He said.
Oh, I thought it said big cats.
Big cats. I was like, what are you talking?
Well, that's what I thought he said.
I just remember he said.
I can't hear you.
You're probably.
No, now I can hear you, but I couldn't.
I'm big cats.
Big cats.
Any future agenda items? If not, we are going to move into the next item on the agenda, so closed session, so. Should I read these all at once, or should I do?
Yeah, go ahead and read it all.
Okay. So. First one is the village of Belleville village board will enter, will enter into a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin state statute nineteen dot eight five subsection one subsection C. For the purposes of considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data. Of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. The village board may reconvene into open session and take action on the subject matter discussion in closed session. And that's related to discuss and consider the appointment of a chief of police. And then we have a number of items under the village of board, Belleville village board will enter into a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin state sack, state statute. Nineteen dot eight five subsection one subsection E for the purposes of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing. Of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, the village board may reconvene into open session. And take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. This is related to discuss and consider the purchase and sale. Agreement for the village owned property at one oh nine South Park Street. Establish a negotiating position regarding the Belleville fire and EMS contract. Discuss and consider Badger Trails annexation development agreement. Establish a negotiation position regarding the northeast sanitary sewer extension. And establish a negotiation position regarding the possible purchase of commercial property in tid three.
Make a motion to go in the closed session.
Second. So Maxine made a motion to go into closed session, and that is seconded by Tony. Honey?
What is E? Where's, where's tid three?
Tid three is a west side, so this, this is, this, these were, that was actually part of our initial proposal. That we've set aside funds to potentially buy some of the commercial lots. These would be lots that would be essentially uphill from the clinic out there. That would be. Yeah, we, we talked about that, but we haven't taken any action on it, so this is really just to kind of figure out if we want to go that direction. Any other? Discussion? Roll then.
Roll call.
Oh, right, uh, trustee Baman.
Yep.
Justice Euchelkra, yes. Kazmar, yes. Ward, yes. Seagler.
Yes.
Service?
Yes.
Is that Larson?
Yes.
And those such them.
Six thirty four P M.
Anderson. I missed the time, which I'm.
At one.
Ten of one, okay, thank you. Just two minutes. Okay. Um, Chanel.
Okay, so we're back in open session?
Back in open session. Um, the. I'll show on one oh nine South Park Street.
Yeah, so I will make a motion to, uh. Enter into a purchase and sale agreement for the village owned property at one oh nine South Park Street.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. That passes. Then.
I'll make a motion to approve the Badger Trails agreement.
Second.
Okay, so motion by Tony. Seconded by Shelley to approve the Badger Trails. Annexation development agreement. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. That passes. You think that's it?
I said make a motion, we adjourned, second.
Seconded. Through the purpose.
Motion by Shelley, seconded by Tony to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. We are adjourned at ten oh three P M.